City Council.
One second.
Oh, nope, nope.
Sorry, Victor, Victor, did you want to make your?
I, I, can you, can you all hear me?
Yes, we can.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry, I just.
Yes, so muy buenas noches. Queremos dejarles saber que esta reunión se va a traducir al español. Por fin de acceder el, la función en Zoom. Busquen el globo, el icono del mundo en su, al fondo de su pantalla. Y ahí podrán seleccionar el idioma del español para acceder la traducción en español. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Victor. I'm excited to have a chance to properly introduce Victor Hernandez. Begin to our meetings with the explanation of our Spanish interpretation services. Thanks again, Victor. I'd like to have a real call to call this meeting's order.
Councilmember Penrose.
Here.
Councilmember Rarback.
Here.
Vice Mayor Reddick.
Here.
Mayor Brownstone.
Here.
You have a quorum.
Thank you. And before I open up the public forum, our city manager, Bob Nisbet, would like to make a brief announcement.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council and members of the public. I did want to make an announcement which I was gonna make under city managers' updates. That's a little later in the agenda, but since public forum is, is next. Our thought was that there might be some comments on this issue, and so I wanted to make these comments before members commented on public forum, although I'm looking in the audience and I don't see anyone from the Castle, Casa Del Mar neighborhood. But for those people watching at home. And at the March 23rd council meeting, I believe it was. We presented the beach plan, the beach implementation plan for this summer. And based on our experience from last summer, our expectations is that it's going to be a very busy summer. And we learned a lot from our response last year and what we saw during the pandemic in terms of numbers of people coming to Half Moon Bay to get outside, and we think that's going to continue this year. So at that meeting, as you'll recall, there's a number of measures we're taking with regard to signage, increased garbage collection and cans at various locations, coordination with other agencies, including county parks, state parks, et cetera. Making sure that bathrooms are all open and clean. And part of that was also providing some additional porta potties and some key, what we thought were some key spots based on feedback we got last year. Last year again was a tough year. We were kind of making this up as we went. There were times during the year when bathrooms were closed during the height of the surge in the summer. And there were times when we had great weather. And as I said, we were getting numbers of visitors that we had just never seen. So we did get a lot of complaints about people not using restrooms, relieving themselves where they should not. There were numerous complaints in that regard, and so as we went into our thinking this year, as I said, we did make a decision to install additional porta potties, both at the Poplar parking lot, also one at the end of Kelly, and then we recommended one at the end of Wave Street, which is a residential neighborhood, Castle Del Mar, but does have access to both the Coastal Trail and portions of the State Park, Venice Beach, also Roosevelt Beach to the north. Over the past, say, two to three weeks, we received a lot of feedback, I will call it, negative feedback from members of the community of Castle Del Mar. Not being proponents of putting a temporary porta potty in that location at the end of Wave Street. So we did take in all the feedback that we got through these emails. We have responded to all of these emails now, and maybe that's why we're not seeing members of the community here tonight to speak under public forum, but we did change our mind on that. So based on what we received and our thinking about how that area is used and the fact that all the state park restrooms will be open this year. We did agree that maybe this is not the best idea, and so we have changed course in our recommendation as part of our beach plan for this summer is to not install that porta potty there. So I wanted to make that announcement now, again, just in anticipation that the word had not gone out to the public. But we have sent emails to everyone who we received an email from indicating that we were going to make that recommendation and that we were going to pull back that part of the plan. So just wanted to make that announcement. If there's any questions, I'll take them. If I see none, I'll just take that as general concurrence by the council.
Looks good. No questions. Great. Okay, thank you. Appreciate that update. Now we're about to open up our public forum. Public forum is for any comments about anything people want to comment here. That is, except for things that are agendized items, or anything that's not on our agenda. I will just point out here that we will be having a presentation in about 20 minutes from the folks who are the operating our new homeless shelter. Representatives from Life Moves and representatives from the county. So if you may, if you have any questions that you want to ask in the public forum, please do. And when we do that presentation around 20 minutes, people will be able to respond to some of the questions that you might have. So let's open up the public forum, and you can raise your hand. You'll see next to your participant list attendees, participant, and I see there's at least one hand raised. See if any others want to join.
Chris Lynn, go ahead. You have three minutes.
Thank you very much. I just wanted to send out a warm and loving thank you to the community and to the council. Earlier in the year, we did our annual teacher appreciation supply party. And although we had to modify it for, you know, the pandemic and being safe, we were still actually able to hit a record. And we were able to support 102 coastside teachers with the help of donations from 64 businesses and residents. And Hassett Ace Hardware also donated gift cards. And so each of those 102 teachers walked away with $125 to spend on their classroom and their kids as they are coming back in. And we just really appreciate everybody who donated. It totaled $12,750 that all stayed local. So thank you so very much. The chamber is so appreciative that everybody supports this event year after year. This was year 15, I believe. And it was just really heartwarming, and we're so excited to continue to break records year after year. Everybody is awesome.
Thank you, Chris Lynn, and to the chamber for organizing that fundraiser for teachers who are always in badly in need of extra money for their classrooms and often end up spending that money out of their own pockets. So greatly appreciated by the community. Thank you.
I don't have any other hands raised, Mayor.
Okay, thank you, Jessica. We will now close the public forum. And we will begin our next portion of our meeting. I'm going to start with a proclamation. And this proclamation was actually introduced to us at our last meeting by Ruby Salazar from the Youth Leadership Institute, who unfortunately couldn't make it tonight. And in her place, we luckily have Alheli. Am I pronouncing your name correctly? Alheli?
A H is silent. Alali Quenca. Thank you.
Alali, all right. Thank you very much. Appreciate that. Okay. And so she's here to receive this proclamation. And also, if you have any comments after I finish my comments, please do. And would love to hear how things are going so far in terms of any activities that have been happening in the area. So, so this is a proclamation regarding California Friday Night Live Month. And it's designated for the month of April. But I imagine actually these are activities that maybe we may want to continue actually throughout the summer when everybody's off and has time on their hands and some of these very issues come up during the summer. So I'm thinking, I'm interested in hearing what's been going on so far. And then maybe perhaps we'll have some separate conversations moving forward about other ways the city might help youth leader. Youth Leadership Institute and working maybe with some other groups, Boys and Girls Club, et cetera, to kind of coordinate some activities around this. But just as some background, the California Friday Night Live program was developed in Sacramento in 1984 as a model program for the state of California. So it's celebrating 37 years of engaging young people. It was designed to reduce alcohol use and other similar problems among young people by building partnerships for positive and healthy youth development, which engage youth as active leaders and resources in their communities. There are many dangers associated with teens drinking alcohol or riding in a car with an impaired driver, damage to property, injuries, sexual assaults, unwanted pregnancies, STDs, and trying other drugs are all possible outcomes of underage drinking. Friday Night Live is a youth development and substance abuse prevention program for high school and middle school aged youth. Friday Night Live provides support and opportunities for young people to build leadership and advocacy skills while promoting healthier lifestyles. Parents are encouraged to talk to their teens about their choices if they were to find themselves in a situation where some of their friends may be drinking alcohol and to focus on ways to increase their safety and responsible decision making in these situations. So during the month, the kickoff month is this month, April. And youth of more than 600 chapters will raise awareness in their counties throughout the state of California in order to reduce underage drinking, underage gambling, and tobacco use by mobilizing their communities with a unified call to action. So I, Robert Brownstone, along with my fellow council members, hereby recognize the month of April 2021 as California Friday Night Live Month. And we applaud and thank the leadership, staff, volunteers, and youth who are committed to improving the quality of life for present and future generations. And in that regard, especially our own Youth Leadership Institute here on the coast. And they've been active participants in many of our council meetings. And I appreciate all the work that's done on behalf of youth here. So Alheli, 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 thank you. Alheli, if you could, any comments on the activities?
Thank you. Thank you so much. We really appreciate this recognition and proclamation. I am the Bay Area Director of Program, so it's really great to be able to do a deep dive into Half Moon Bay and supporting our programs. We currently have two youth groups, so be on the lookout. Coastside Youth Council as well as our Pilar Cito's Youth Group. Their main work this whole year has been working on, you know, building their own knowledge around the risks of engaging with alcohol and other drug use as well as taking that information and developing a positive social norms campaign so that their, their peers can learn about the risks and also learn about different behaviors that they can engage in that are more positive, that promotes a positive community for themselves and for their peers. And so we're just really grateful for this recognition. We hope that you all can continue watching our work in Half Moon Bay, and we would welcome any conversations about learning more about what we're doing at these, in these two communities and two youth groups. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
And apologies to the interpreters. I know I spoke way too fast. My mom is a Spanish interpreter, so I need to be more mindful of that. Thank you.
Great. They keep up. We have great, they're great interpreters. Thank you so much. And yeah, I will be actually interested in hearing more about some of the specific activities and any peer counseling type activities, especially that we might be able to assist with one way or the other. So thank you. Thank you for being here. Thank you for accepting our proclamation tonight. Okay. I think we're now going to move on to our first evening presentation.
Mayor Brownstone.
Oh, sorry.
Before we head into that, we did have a mid-coast community council update.
Yes, that's, yeah, that's what I was going to answer next. Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, that was the first presentation. Got it. Thank you. Okay. Yes, we have guests from Midcoast Community Council presenting an update. And who would be going first from our midcoast community? The councilors are just one individual tonight.
There are two tons.
There you are. Sorry, Claire didn't see you down there. Great.
No, I just want to let you know, Robert, we don't have any participant list that shows up on our screens. So I wish there was one, but, but we don't. But I'm here representing the Midcoast Community Council. And the biggest thing I probably want to tell you about tonight is our last meeting last week. We had, we did a four-hour roundtable on fire risk. And there were about 100 people who attended, which is a lot. And I'm hoping that we can, as COVID dies down, can keep being as open and available to the community as we are now. But basically, at the, at the roundtable, the Board of Supervisors was represented. And what we're looking for them to do mostly right now is help keep coordinating all of the efforts on fire safety. And to finish up the tree policy that the unincorporated county is trying to put together to update management of vegetation. There was also the forester from the Cal Fire, who talked a lot about weather patterns and what we would expect in a fire, what types of fires there are. He agrees that eucalyptus is a major risk, but letting it go back to the native chaparral is also a major risk. Maybe not quite as much, but still is the inherent fire risk that runs through our community. People are really quite concerned about it because especially in El Granada, and especially near Corey Park, people are losing fire insurance policies and unable to renew them. There's concern, as always, about evacuation if there is an emergency. What we were told as well was that if there were a fire in El Granada, it would most likely be driven by north winds, which means it would head to Half Moon Bay. So in addition to, to those people, the Resource Conservation District was there. And they're basically coordinating with the county for overall projects on fire safety. They're also working as funding agents. And they're also providing a service that's very popular, which is a free chipping service where they're on a scheduled basis, taking their chipper to various neighborhoods on the big coast and having people clear out their yards or cut down their small trees or whatever and just chip it up and get rid of it, which people love. And in addition, the Parks Department was there, and they detailed their priority setting process. They have a lot of fire risk properties that they manage in a limited budget and a limited staff. So they're not able to do as much as people would like them to do, but they have put in shaded fire breaks in Corey Park last year. Their priority now is to maintain that so that it doesn't all grow back and to gradually expand. Other issues that remain are like the medians in El Granada, which nobody seems to really take ownership of in terms of maintaining them. There is also. There's something else I wanted to tell you. Oh, yes, there's another thing that's going on in El Granada. There's a group of, I think, six property owners that are neighbors on one street who have banded together to put in a project of removing their three, two eucalyptus trees and replanning with more native sustainable trees. It's a pretty nice demonstration project. They've gotten some special recognition from the County Board of Supervisors and the Planning Department, and we're waiting to see how that goes. Because most of the fire risk is not on public property, it's on private property. So it's important that, that people be given an opportunity to do what they can with their own property. So that's, that's mostly what we've been focusing on. We'll probably focus on it some more and try to decide how the MCC can, can help advance this. If there's any questions, I'd be happy to take them.
Hey, Claire, I just had two quick questions was the roundtable that you mentioned discussing, you know, fire prevention. Was that the same thing as the Coastside CERT three-part series?
No.
Okay. Well, just to mention to folks, Coastside CERT, they just did their first part, but they're doing a three-part series on fire protection with lots of advice on protecting homes, et cetera. And, and if anyone goes onto their website, Coastside CERT, there's more details. And I, I'm not sure. I think they're recorded, but I'm double checking on that. But I think that'll be a valuable resource going forward into what looks like another drought season. And regarding the chipper program, I have actually contacted them and to see if we could get a program started out here for Half Moon Bay. I don't know if other cities are already doing that, but I don't think we have something here. But yeah, it is a great program, and they fund a lot of it with grants. And they will come around to people's homes and bring a chipper and encourage getting rid of, you know, a lot of dead wood. So thank you. Thank you for that update. Let's see, apologies, Jessica. I see where I did go off the schedule, which one was to come. I read the word proclamations first in presentations, and my brain just went straight to proclamations. So sorry about that. Okay, so now we're down to a third item is we're fortunate enough tonight to have a presentation of our, regarding our county and coastside shelter. Status. The county has selected a manager for, for this, for Life Moves.
I have to recuse myself because of where I live, so I'm gonna.
Right. Okay, yeah, yeah. And we also have our San Mateo County manager, Mike Callagie, with us. And we'll be starting with you, Mike, tonight, or?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, that would be great.
Okay.
Yeah, and Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Mr. Nizbet, I really appreciate this opportunity to introduce the operator who's very well known in this county and someone that we have an incredible relationship with, and I think just does an incredible job. I think we're very lucky to have him here, and that's Life Moves. As you know, they run our shelter in Redwood City and have done a fantastic job, you know, throughout the Bay Area, really handling those that are experiencing homelessness with the goal, of course, of getting them permanent, permanent housing. But they treat them so humanely and, and understand the needs, the diverse needs of these individuals. So, you know, actually, this might be the first time, Aubrey Wright, that I get to introduce you as the, as the CEO. You've taken over that role, correct?
Yes, I have.
Well, this is great. Well, let me introduce him, Aubrey Merriman, who is the new, the very new CEO of Life Moves. And we're just so, so lucky to be partnered with him and the incredible organization that we've had such a great, long partnership with. So let me turn it over to Aubrey to, to tell you a little bit about what they have planned.
Thank you, Mr. Callagie, and also, good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the council and Mr. Nizbet. It is my great honor to share in this space with you today. I am here to introduce myself, as Mr. Callagie had mentioned, the new CEO of Life Moves. And I'm extremely humbled and honored by this opportunity to partner with those of you in this space. And I am here to also support the incredible work of Life Moves employees on the ground and the steadfast efforts of Dr. Brian Greenberg and Jacob Stone and team, who are here to speak to you about our excitement about partnering with Half Moon Bay and the project that we have in front of us. And so I'm happy to answer any question that you might have for me at the conclusion of the presentation. But I do want to transition the time to Dr. Greenberg and the Life Moves team so they can really speak to what we're doing and the excitement around what that's going to look like and what we think it's going to mean for the community that we're trying to serve in Half Moon Bay. So Dr. Greenberg.
Thank you for having me, councilmembers. Mayor, I'm Brian Greenberg. I am a psychologist. I've been with Life Moves for 16 years. Just as an overview, Life Moves is the legacy organization of two prior organizations, Shelter Network in San Mateo County and Envision the Way Home in Santa Clara County. In San Mateo County, we run four family shelters with 85 units. We tend to serve about 200 children or more a night between the two. We tend to serve about 200 children or more a night between the two counties. We also run a single adult interim housing facilities, as this shelter will be. We also run outreach services. We've had an outreach person on the coast, west of the coastal range. We run transitional housing. We have a drop-in center across from Stanford. And in 30 days, we're opening up a large 100-door shelter, built from the ground up with modulators in Mountain View, just a block from the Krispy Kreme and, and the Costco in Mountain View. And that'll be about twice the size to scale it to the community of this facility. You know, we really understand the nuanced issues of operating a shelter. We understand the need for curb appeal. We understand the need for great landscaping, for litter control. We understand that when programs are run right, there's not people smoking in front of the, in front of the building, that we blend in with the community, and that's our responsibility. We understand that, you know, that we serve a wide range of stakeholders. Everyone from law enforcement, the Sheriff's Department, to merchants and residents, to the elected officials, to our county funders, our volunteers. We have, at non-COVID times, we have about 11,000 volunteers a year, as well as our homeless residents being stakeholders. We also are aware that to operate the facility successfully and effectively, that it's wise and smart for us to engage the community. So we have a wide range of ways for the community to get involved. We'll have a support committee there of community members who want to support the functioning of the shelter. There's a community advisory committee that we'll be participating in and then volunteering. And of course, being open to email conversation, phone conversation, and ongoing feedback. So this isn't our first rodeo, we're very excited about this project. We think we can visibly and dramatically and positively reduce homelessness, impact homelessness on the coast. And we're really looking forward to this opportunity. And with that, Jacob, I think is going to tell you a little bit about shelter operations. Thank you.
Thank you, Brian.
Yes, thank you, Brian. And Mr. Mayor, council members, thank you for having us. Again, first, I just wanted to say how grateful and excited we are to be on the coast, to have a positive impact on the coast. So we're really fortunate and feel fortunate to be doing this. You know, to, how we operate our, our program here is going to be very similar to how we operate our, our other shelters. And that's by prioritizing safety for not both, not only the clients, but staff as well. We will be having 24/7 staff on-site, in addition to case managers and other direct services staff. We found, we find that as clients feel more comfortable and safe in the living environment, they're more willing to work towards their barriers that they're facing in, in terms of finding and retaining housing. And on the other side, staff, as staff feel more comfortable and safe in their work environment, they're more willing to show up every day with a positive attitude. And that really does trickle down to improved, positive client care. We'll be using a wraparound, trauma-informed, client-centered approach that really includes intensive case management. Everyone who comes into our program will be matched with a case manager from day one. They will, the case manager will be working with that particular client and household throughout their, throughout their stay. They'll build initially a tailored case plan with a set of goals and action steps that really address the barriers that that person in that household is, is facing at that time. So they'll be working on accomplishing those goals, action steps throughout their stay. We'll be linking clients to onsite behavioral health therapy services and external medical care services. We know that our single adult population is getting older on average and also more medically and mentally fragile. And so being able to link to these two services is going to be extremely important. We're really excited to have not only case managers, but having a vocational specialist on staff who will be working directly with the clients in, in securing and retaining employment. We're also having a housing specialist in addition, who will be working one-on-one with clients on the, the soft skills, how to talk to a landlord, how to be a good tenant. And then also, this person will be building good relationships with landlords throughout the region. And so we can move folks into housing. And again, that's our, our ultimate goal is to move folks from homelessness to permanent housing. And so our staff will have a very clear expectation of our clients. And our clients will have a very clear expectation of what we expect from them. We have a very thorough set of guidelines that we will be going over with the clients on a regular basis, especially at intake. So we will set that, set those very clear upon intake. We've strategically built out a, a slow ramp-up phase where we will have a handful of intakes per week. And we will ensure that we're fully occupied by July. We want to have clients come in, sort of trickling in, so we can begin to have more face time and build that trust with those clients from day one and not overwhelm both clients and staff by filling all 52 rooms at once. So by July, we should be fully occupied. Last thing I'll say before I turn it over to Anna Kelleher, the Program Director, is that I think the intangible things that we've seen at our successful programs and sort of the secret sauce that we fill is building a strong community internally. And so that our clients really take pride in a sense of ownership where they're temporarily, that's the key word, temporarily staying. And so that, it looks like celebrating accomplishments, you know, big and small. We want people to get excited for their neighbor in securing employment, securing housing, so that motivation really does trickle down and is a domino effect, so that people can get and stay engaged in our programming. So with that said, I will pass it over to Anna Kelleher, the Program Director. And again, happy to answer any questions at the very end. Thank you.
Good evening. Thank you, boss, or Jacob. I'm Anna Kelleher, and I will be the new Program Director for the Coastside Shelter Inn. Thank you, Mayor, for having me here, as well as the council members, and to our new boss, CEO Aubrey. So you have to bear with me, I'm feeling a little nervous, a little anxious as well. Tomorrow is our opening day, where we switch over from Samaritan House to, to us. I would like to share that we do have the majority of all of our staff hired. So over the last two weeks, I've been working really hard to make sure we have everything in place for tomorrow to start. I have been with Life Moves for four years now, and I've been the Program Director and still currently is overseeing it interminally until next week for First Step for Families Homeless Shelter, which is one of the biggest homeless shelters for families within San Mateo County. We oversee 39 units, and at any one given time, we could have up to 220 people on our site. Within that same site, we have two actual properties, 15 one-bedroom apartments, as well as 24 single occupancy units where families can, can stay in with bunk beds. My philosophy as far as leadership and also managing a shelter program, I was homeless as a child myself in San Francisco city and county. And I understand what it's like to be considered a homeless person and to have struggled and survived. I strongly believe in caring for people with respect and dignity and meeting people where they're at, no matter what their age is, no matter where they come from, no matter what the color of their skin is, what their religious beliefs or backgrounds are, how a person identifies. I like to treat everyone as a person. I'm also a mom, so this is very important to me because my motherly skills has made me a very nurturing person. And it makes me interact with my staff, as well as all of the clients we have ever served and I have served, in a way where I want to nurture and care for others. So therefore, they can become successful, and the main goal is to seek permanent housing. I think I'm just going to stop there and we'll leave it to everybody else to either ask me questions or the rest of my bosses at Life Moves. Thank you.
Thank you. Open it up for council questions. Joaquin, Councilmember Jimenez.
Hello. I'm really looking forward to this healing shelter opening up, you know, here in our community. It's something that has been needed for some time. I do unofficially work with our homeless population here in Half Moon Bay. I know not all of them, but most of them. And it's, it's good that it's going to be open soon. I'm, people in the community often ask me about when it's going to be open. We do have a large group of homeless population, including, you know, including families. So my question is, has there been anything done about maybe how some of our families could be admitted into, into the healing shelter? We do have, I understand you have other locations in the county. But in this case, you know, the, the homeless families, they work in the coast. The children attend our local schools. So they will actually benefit, you know, from, from this healing shelter in Half Moon Bay. As I understand, the, the, the facility, the hotel, the shelter has some adjacent rooms that could maybe eventually be turned into a family rooms. So the question, have you thought about admitting families into a healing shelter?
Yes, we will take families. We want, most of the occupants will be single adults or couples. But we will take families with minor children, those that we can transfer over the mountain to San Mateo, or one of our other sites will do that. The county has available benefits for families in regards to transitioning to permanent housing that are sometimes more available than for single adults. So we would like to keep those family stays as short as possible. But we will also work very hard not to exit any family to homelessness. So we have a strongly encouraged savings plan. We'll have a vocational council, we'll have a housing specialist. We will rapidly engage them in those services and really work hard to use this as short-term transitional housing for families than a permanent location. But yes, we've been talking to the county about accommodating families.
That's great to hear, Brian, thanks both. Councilmember Jimenez and I were very interested in that, if there's that possibility of accommodating to some extent, when necessary. So that's terrific.
Anna Kelleher's specialty is serving families, so she's going to have a hard time saying no to them.
Excellent, excellent, thank you both. I think I say our council member Ruddock's hand first, and then we'll go to Councilmember Penrose.
So I'm, I'm so glad that you're here and that it's about to take off. I'm very pleased also that we will be having a Citizens Advisory Committee. One thing I'm interested in, I know that the focus is getting folks stabilized and getting them to transition to jobs, housing, et cetera. But is there, are there activities to connect them to our community that they're living in? You know, some form of outreach? I think the success of, of the, the, the shelter will be engagement with the community. So that people feel that we're all connected, not just, you know, there are people in this motel living, they're doing their thing, separate from the rest of us. But will there be outreach and activities to help connect them to the community and make them feel welcome in the community?
So I'll start, and then maybe my peers, my boss can chime in. In non-COVID times, hopefully, we'll be coming out of this at the end of July. We engage a whole network of faith and service organizations to serve food, break bread with our clients. Faith organizations can encourage our clients to come to their services. Again, at Anna's shelter in City of San Mateo, she probably has upwards of 1,000 volunteers a year. So they, there's a lot of ways for people to get connected to the community. And let me say that a third of our graduates move out of the Bay Area, right? I mean, once people understand what the cost of living is, 75 miles away from the coast, that you can rent a one-bedroom for $700 or $800. In our, in our other 12 shelters, about a third of our graduates end up relocating, both individuals and families. So this is their community, we understand that, we'll work to engage the community. Two years down the road, it may not be the community for, it might not be the right place for them to home.
Thank you.
I'll chime in, if that's okay. I think collaboration is most important. You know, not, not just our, our clients we're going to serve as part of the community. Myself and the staff is also going to be part of the community. We're going to be buying coffee, we're going to be going shopping. You know, we're going to be doing everything that everybody who lives there. I currently live in Pacifica. No, it's, you know, it's not right on the coast, right where we are, where we're going to have the shelter. But I love the coast. I love being able to be a part of something and to be, and to be a part of a community. I'm excited to meet all of the various nonprofits and other agencies that are in the community and on the coast. So my goal is, as soon as possible, to start meeting all of those agencies and all of their directors and managers and their staff to really figure out how we can best collaborate and share all of the services that we have. We will have the people, and I want to be able to figure out either how to bring the people to them or bring them, or bring them to us. But again, we do follow COVID guidelines very strictly. We really want to make sure, especially for the, a lot of the people that are a little bit older at the, at the shelter as of right now, that everybody is safe and secure. And that's going to be very important for me as we slowly start to build. But I'm open and ready to meet anybody and everybody. I love coffee, I love, I'm starting to love tea. If you ever want to invite me, not a problem.
We will. Count on it. Councilmember Penrose.
Yeah, first of all, I just wanted to say I am just thrilled that you're here. I am so glad that you're the organization that ended up running our operations. Your reputation precedes you. And in, over the past several years, dealing with the homeless issue and meeting different folks from Life Moves and, and listening to their presentations and going to their, the shelters over the hill, I've just been thrilled, thrilled and so pleased that it's you. I have one, one question that I think may be on the minds of some of the public. And it's not an easy one to answer, I'm sure that there is no set time you can give me. But if you could give me some idea, or give us some idea, of what is the average length of stay of a resident in in transitional housing?
So it's lengthened with unemployment rising a little bit with COVID. And during COVID, it was three to four months. I think now we're up to probably four and five months, or five and six months. But it is certainly much less than a year. We have a quote-unquote mandatory savings plan. We don't exit people for not saving half their income. But whether people are on general assistance or working or disability income, we work hard to reunify people with their families. You know, that's one thing that all homeless people have is a, a son or a daughter, or a parent or a sibling. We have a family reunification program, we have an incentive program for people to work towards their goals. We have a savings plan. Again, we'll have the vocational counselors. So we have a lot of tricks. Everybody has a uniquely tailored plan that comes into our program. Average length of stay, four to five months.
Thank you.
Any other questions from council members? I'm also delighted to see you here. I think that, I, I think Life Moves also actually has an office in Abundant Grace as facility, right? Or Connection, right?
Yes, yes, we do. And we're, and we'll be connected with El Centro Recovery Services, ALAS. Yes, yes, we do. And we're, and we'll be connected with El Centro Recovery Services, ALAS, um, as well as.
I mean, I really couldn't, I don't think I could possibly conceive of, um, a better ecosystem of support in such a small town like ours, where we now have a shelter, we have abundant grace, we have ALAS. We have a lot of, you know, resources here that I think are unusual for a city this small. But we do. So I envision that we will actually have a quite an interesting model program out here because we have incredible collaboration with some established organizations here. So, um, I'm looking forward to your success. We are a city of volunteers. I don't think you'll be lacking in that. And, um, I think we do also happen to have the best doughnut bakery on the coast. But, you know, it's my personal opinion, so I'll be bringing donuts over just to make sure you have some treats on that. So, um, thank you. Welcome. I really appreciate everyone, um, coming over tonight. And, um, looking forward to meeting everybody soon.
Mr. Mayor.
Oh, sorry.
If, if this was a good pivot point, uh, our deputy city manager, Matthew Chittister, has been the city's liaison uh, with the county and, um, Life Moves throughout this transitional process. And he has a component of the presentation tonight and some comments about the, you know, furthering on the connection to the community and the community advisory committee that is being stood up.
Good pivot. Great. Uh, I'd love to hear from Matthew on that. So, Matthew?
All right. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And, uh, yes, uh, I'll, I'll share my gratitude to have, uh, Life Moves here and the county here supporting our community and the residents of our community. Um, I will say that Life Moves has already proven themselves in our community. Um, they, you know, we've worked with them for several years through the Hot Team and their, um, case management work that they've done with many of our homeless residents. They were really instrumental in working with us when we, um, closed the large encampment behind, um, the, the Strawflower Village Shopping Center a few years ago, which we, we believe was successful. And then, you know, they've embedded themselves already in so many of the, um, programs and projects that are being worked on. Um, you know, I attend meetings with our nonprofits through the Coastside Collaborative. Life Moves always has representation there. Uh, the Farmworker Affairs Group always has a, a member of Life Moves in attendance. Um, we've been meeting on drug abuse and addiction issues on the coast, and they've always had someone there. And, uh, later this week, we are kicking off, uh, a group of mental health folks to talk about public safety, law enforcement, and mental health. And of course, Life Moves is showing up in force to that. So, um, already very engaged with our nonprofits and other agencies here on the coast and excited to see them engage further with members of our community. Uh, one of the ways they're gonna do that is through the community advisory committee. As many of you remember, uh, when we met with the county and the community several times in late 2020, uh, we got a lot of feedback from the community, and, and some of those were concerns. And one of the ways that, um, the community felt that we could help alleviate those concerns was by, uh, creating a community advisory committee, uh, members of our community, uh, who had differing feelings about the project and differing, differing backgrounds to help, um, you know, communicate between the community and, um, the county and Life Moves. And, um, to provide information and updates and help us to make decisions going forward. And I'm pleased to say that that, um, advisory committee has been created, and their first meeting is next week. And we're really excited to move that forward. Uh, we opened up the application process for this. Uh, this is a city-led effort with support from Life Moves in the county. And, uh, we opened up applications, uh, about a month ago. Uh, we had an incredible response, um, dozens of really qualified individuals for a limited number of seats. And so we worked with the county, created a subcommittee of county and city staff, um, went through those applications and selected ten individuals that we think, um, again, represent different backgrounds, different experiences, different perspectives, um, all committed to collaborating for the success of this program. But, um, you know, each with their own concerns and ideas to, to move forward. Uh, I wanted to name those individuals tonight. Um, they've already been notified and, and are excited to participate. Um, in no particular order, we have Jill Madamal, Natalie Kerthoyes, Carrie Lovell, Shawna Pickett Gordon, Luke Terra, Valdir Farla, I'm sorry, Fariah, uh, Peter Morris, Rebecca, Rebecca Jackson, Graham Harrell, and Lauren Wilson. And, um, several of these folks live on the mid-coast. Um, the rest are in Half Moon Bay. Uh, one of them, Carrie Lovell, um, lives in Half Moon Bay, but is the former director of, um, Puente down in Pescadero. So she has, um, good knowledge and insights into the needs of the South Coast, which we're grateful to have on this group. Uh, we have a high school student. We have college professors, uh, business leaders, um, retired folks, people who have been here a long time, people who have been here a short time. Um, and we're really excited to engage with them and work with them to, uh, make this a successful project. Uh, one of the first things they'll do is they'll help us identify some performance measures in order to, that we can track with the county and, and Life Moves and identify successes and areas for improvement and change as we move forward. Uh, so we're grateful for the support. Victor Guyton, from, uh, the, our city manager's office, will be, um, leading this group. I'm grateful for all of his efforts around homelessness. And, uh, we'll have participation from some of our nonprofits and Life Moves in the county going forward. So, uh, I, again, just wanna share our gratitude with Life Moves in the county for the support of our community. And, um, we're already seeing great outcomes at this facility. And I think we're, we're primed for, uh, some more great outcomes for individuals that are in need right now. So, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, you're muted.
Thank you. Sorry about that. I think that, um, I think that's it for our presentations for now. I don't have any announcements of community activities, um, or report out from recent closed sessions, Catherine?
Uh, yes, Mr. Mayor. Uh, the council did meet in closed session prior to this meeting. Uh, it met on two items. Um, the first item was, uh, a state of Sandra Lee Harmon versus County of San Mateo. Um, as well as the city of Half Moon Bay is one of the co-defendants in that case. Um, there is a report out on that item. Uh, the council voted unanimously, uh, to, to defend the city um, in that case, uh, by taking advantage of the indemnification that the city has, um, through the sheriff's contract. This is, um, a civil action, uh, brought by the state of Sandra Harmon, um, uh, seeking damages in an excessive force case. The sheriff's contract does provide for, uh, indemnification of the city in those, um, in those instances. Uh, so the, uh, vote will allow the, the city to take advantage of, of that indemnification. Uh, and then the second item the council met on was the, uh, city of Half Moon Bay versus, um, Granada Community Services District and Montero, um, Water and Sanitary District. Uh, the council took no reportable action, um, on that item. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Catherine. Appreciate it. We will now move on to, um, a few updates. Uh, I'll start with COVID-19 updates.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, yes, we do have three formal city manager updates tonight. Our, our normal, uh, COVID-19 update, uh, another update on Earth Day activities that follows up on, um, uh, announcements that were made at your last meeting. And then, um, our, our, uh, chief of police, our captain, Sal Lopez, has a short presentation he's gonna make on, uh, a, a cool tool that they have, that they're gonna be using, uh, I think, starting this, uh, summer season. Uh, but before I do that, I want to acknowledge, um, a huge milestone, uh, for the city that happened last week on April fifteenth. Um, the city had, uh, our local coastal plan certified by the Coastal Commission. Uh, it was a very exciting, uh, meeting, I thought. Uh, it was a big deal. Um, our last local coastal plan, uh, update, our last major one was, I believe, mid-nineties, so twenty-five years ago. And we probably won't do another one, a major one, for maybe another twenty, twenty-five years. So this is a, a fifty-year, once in a fifty-year, uh, milestone for the city. Um, this is our, our land use plan, our community vision, uh, our roadmap, uh, for the city for the next twenty years. How we will develop, uh, how we will protect open space, and how we will address affordable housing here on the coast. Uh, so just a really huge accomplishment, and I didn't want it to go unnoticed. I have a feeling some council members might wanna make comments too, so I'll leave space for that. Um, but I wanted to acknowledge, um, really, it starts with the community. This is a community effort. There were numerous, numerous community meetings over the past seven years as we developed this plan. So it's a community plan. And second, it's your council's plan. It's your council's plan. Previous councils, uh, were also involved. So I want to acknowledge you and your predecessors on pushing this, um, this plan forward. And then finally, staff, of course, uh, many staff at the city involved, especially, of course, Jill Echus and Brittany, uh, who led the way. And I really wanna give, um, just special acknowledgement to your community development director, Jill Echus. Um, she has really, um, lived, uh, and put her heart and soul in this effort for the past five years. And there is no way it would have gotten to this point and certified by the commission within three months after your council's adoption without her leadership. Um, so just wanna acknowledge that and give kudos to her for doing all the right things. Um, she put, she really did put her life into this. Uh, it was a commitment of hers. She did all the right things. She talked to all the people, and she got this done in a way that got a unanimous certification by the Coastal Commission. So just amazing effort by her. So I wanted to acknowledge that. Yes, we should all clap. And, uh, maybe if there's any, of course, I'll go back to you, Mayor, before I go to the next update and see if there's any comments that you or other council members wanna make. I just did not wanna go, let this accomplishment, uh, go unnoticed tonight.
It is an amazing accomplishment. My only regret is that we can't meet in person 'cause this, we would definitely would be having cake and all sorts of refreshments to celebrate this, and we still might later on. But, um, yeah, it was, um, it was really remarkable how many of the commission members mentioned it. It was quite unheard of, that this was a model plan to be studied and referenced by other cities throughout California. So, um, so yeah, uh, everything you said, Bob, and, uh, really, uh, a relief and all the countless hours that have been put into this. Um, council member Ruddock?
Um, I have worked in coastal zone management, uh, in my day job for more than twenty years. And I've been an alternate coastal commissioner. And I can tell you that this is a really unique situation, that we would have one meeting where the commission considered our local coastal plan unheard of. For many jurisdictions, it's a years-long struggle. And certainly, our talented and hard-working staff, um, played a key role here in a very remarkable collaboration process with commission staff, just unheard of. And, um, you know, the commission is saying that this is not just a model plan, but a model process. About how city and city staff, you know, is able to work productively with the commission instead of being an adversarial role. So, um, very unique situation, very laudable, um, very exciting, uh, as far as I'm concerned. Somebody who's, who's seen a lot with the commission for a few decades. So, um, congratulations to our staff. Thank you. Congratulations to our planning commission, to, um, city council members. This was a remarkable team effort. And I, I think the, the precedent that we've set, working productively with the coastal commission staff ought to continue, you know, in, in other areas, because it's not over. We're, we're a city in the coastal zone. We're entirely located in the coastal zone. And we need a productive working relationship with the commission. So I would say, you know, continue the good work onward and upward, and, uh, congratulations to, to everyone, and, uh, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, David. And to, uh, council member Ruddock's point, having this great collaborative relationship, it just reads so many benefits moving forward, you know, 'cause we do live in the coastal zone. We have to get permits to cross the street when you live in the coastal zone. It's, you know, a lot of things are looked, you know, are, yeah. So we work with the coastal, Coastal Commission oversees a lot of the things that go on in the coast. And, uh, so, so, you know, having that trust that we're doing the right thing and our intentions are good, it really goes a long way, uh, in moving things forward in the future. Any other thoughts on this from council members before we move on?
Um, I'm just totally blown away by, uh, what the Coastal Commission did, what they said about us. Uh, I'm really, really thrilled that we now have this collaborative relationship. Uh, I'm really impressed with Jill Echus, Brittany, uh, Bob, the planning commission. It goes on and on. Um, the community has been involved with, uh, the general plan advisory committee. That's been going on for years now. Uh, the Green Foothills, Sierra Club have all made important contributions to our, uh, land use plan. It's, it's really been a collaborative effort between the whole community and the Coastal Commission and their staff and our staff. And, uh, I'm just really delighted to have a plan going forward. And the, the implementation plan, I believe, is gonna be just as good. So, thank you all.
Thank you for those comments, council member Rarback. And, um, yeah, I'm glad you mentioned, um, planning commission, um, in addition to staff. I mean, I know there's folks on that commission who's literally walked into one of their homes one day. And their living room floor was just like covered with photos, overhead photos, incredible amounts of material. And just amazing amount of long hours on weekends putting this thing together for years. And, uh, it's really hard to, to overemphasize what that time commitment was like. So a labor of sweat and a lot of love for this community and the coast. So, uh, what a great result. Anyone else for a move on?
Yes, I, I just wanna echo what everyone else has said. There's nothing more to add. Just, uh, I, I am so grateful to everyone in the community, everyone on staff, and everyone in the other organizations that have helped us get here. We are a new Half Moon Bay with a new future, and it looks like a rosy one. So I'm excited.
And I think, let's see, was there anyone else? Oh, there we go. Sorry. Council member Jimenez, your, your box moved from over to the top. Great.
You know what? I'm, uh, I'm just very happy, you know, I'm, uh, I'm the new kid in the block. And I'm the new person, you know, and in city, because the city government. I'm definitely, you know, very grateful for the decision, uh, and all the support from, uh, different groups. Uh, for many years, you know, uh, the last few years, I've been learning about, uh, the Coastal Commission, you know, about different organizations about protecting our open spaces. And, uh, this is, uh, I mean, it's a milestone or something that, uh, is gonna go down in history. Like you said, oh, fifty years, who knows when it's gonna happen again, you know, twenty-fifty maybe. So I just wanna, you know, thank you to all of you who did a great job, you know, uh, and, uh, it's an honor to be part of the, of the team and to protect our, uh, our coast, you know, open spaces. And, uh, looking forward to, uh, to many more. Thank you. Thank you, all of you.
Thank you, council member Jimenez. Okay, I think we've heard from everyone, and thank you, Bob, for taking that moment for us, and, uh, appreciate that.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, so let's, uh, we're gonna move on to our three updates.
Three updates, yes. Our first is our, um, COVID-19 update. We, we've been doing this every council meeting now, I guess, for almost a year. And it seems like every two weeks, there is something, something new. Uh, so Matthew, what's new?
Thank you, Bob, and council members. Uh, next slide, please. Um, nothing's changed as far as the tier. We remain in the orange tier. Uh, next slide, please. Uh, I do wanna just point out a couple of data points that have changed. Um, at this point, uh, there have been at least, there have been more than four hundred thousand, um, individuals over the age of sixteen uh, that have received at least one dose of vaccination. That's, uh, sixty-three percent of our sixteen-plus population in San Mateo County. And what's really exciting is, um, Half Moon Bay is now at sixty-seven point two percent. Uh, two weeks ago, uh, we were much lower. We were much lower on the list of cities as far as our vaccination rates. So, um, I, I think some of this may be some data lag and reporting lag. Um, but there's been a lot of effort to get folks vaccinated and. But there's been a lot of effort to get folks vaccinated and we're well on our way as a community to getting fully vaccinated. Another exciting thing is the case count in San Mateo County, as well as in Half Moon Bay, only rose slightly over the last two weeks. In Half Moon Bay, it only rose by five. And the positivity rate has gone down a little bit over the last two weeks. So we're making progress here in San Mateo County. That's not the case everywhere and we have to be vigilant. We know that things can change rapidly, but we're grateful for all the efforts of the county and the nonprofits and everybody who's been involved in getting everybody vaccinated. Next slide, please. So things have changed around vaccinations, of course. We've had two changes since our last meeting. And at this point, anybody 16 and up is eligible to be vaccinated in California. Now, the supply of vaccines remains the biggest constraint. And we know that San Mateo County's supply has been very low the last several weeks. And that, of course, was impacted by the issues with the Johnson and Johnson vaccine. But they continue to target vulnerable areas. Last week, there was vaccinations given through Coastside Hope to vulnerable communities here on the coast. And they'll continue to target those communities as the rest of us are able to pursue vaccinations where, when and where we can. The county notification list and state midterm notification lists still remain a good place to go. You're no longer looking to get notified of your eligibility. But by going onto those sites, you can find and make appointments for vaccinations in San Mateo County and in the greater Bay Area region. I also encourage folks to go to smchhealth.org/covidvaccine. There's a lot of local health data available there, dashboards, where you can really learn a lot about what's happening in San Mateo County around COVID. And then the state COVID website, which is covid19.ca.gov, has a lot of information on statewide efforts as well as rules and requirements. I think we all know that the governor has promised that if, if we can meet certain requirements, that the state's economy will fully open in mid-June. And I think that's all something we're all fully looking forward to. But that will require us to continue to vaccinate and continue to socially distance and continue to wear masks so that we can keep those case rates really low and hospitalizations really low and get everybody vaccinated. Next slide, please. We do continue to offer testing. That is important at this time, even though people are getting vaccinated. And, and so we continue to offer every Monday from 3:00 PM to 6:00 PM, except for holidays, at the TED-Ad Talk Community Center. And Senior Coast Siders continues to offer vaccinations on the first and third Thursdays from 9:00 to 11:00. And for those appointments at Senior Coast Siders, you can call 726-9056. This week was our last week using the curative tests, which the county has been working with them for many, many months, offering the oral swab testing. And it's been really successful and effective. But as of next Monday, we are switching to Fulgent, and that's through the county contract. Fulgent is, you know, a longstanding organization that's provided healthcare and testing and vaccinations in a lot of different ways for many years. The main reason the county has selected Fulgent as their testing provider going forward is that through their process, and it is a shallow nasal swab. It's still self-administered, so it does not, the, what they described as brain swabs that people got really early on during the pandemic. This is self-administered. It's just around the rim of your nose and it's very easy and non-invasive. But this allows Fulgent to test not just for positivity or negativity, but for those that are found to be positive for COVID, they can actually tell the county which, and the, and the individual that's been tested, which strain they've been infected with. And as we move forward and deal with additional strains and the mutation of the virus, that's going to be really, really important information. And so we're supportive of that as a city and our volunteers and staff will be out there for several more months, making sure that people have access. With Fulgent, there's a new way to get registered. You can either go to the county website at smcgov.org and there's a link there, or you can go directly to smc.fulgentgenetics.com. And there you can make appointments online. We'll continue to take walk-up appointments for those that cannot make an appointment or don't have access to technology. And we hope to continue to serve the community and keep everybody healthy and safe. I believe that's my last slide. That's it. Happy to take any questions on that, on that item.
Thank you, Matthew. And by the way, that is great news about switching to a vendor that can actually gather data about which variants and strains because that's going to be pretty critical down the road when it comes to figuring it out, need for boosters, et cetera, you know. Variants come into play. So it's a great move by the county and I'm glad that's came aboard so quickly. And Matthew, thank you, as always, for all the incredible work you've been doing regarding getting testing, vaccination sites. These were not on your plan a year ago to be doing all this in addition. And what you've accomplished in establishing out here on the coast has really been amazing because I, I remember months ago, you know, so getting so many emails, you know, where can we go other than over the hill, you know, if we can't, you know, get over there? And, and and looking at that, just that vaccination rate that you showed earlier on, you know, it was 67%. Incredibly successful here on the coast. And also incredible, great delivery service for some of our more vulnerable communities that are most affected and we were really concerned about that. So thanks for being a key person in making that all work here. A small endeavor accomplishment. So owe you a lot of gratitude for a lot of work. Thank you. Any other questions from council members? Then I don't think I see, oh, sorry, Joaquin.
Just one thing that we are, well, when we go into the community, especially with the farmwork community, even though they have received that vaccine, you know, both of doses, we still advise to wear protective gear. And also if you feel like getting a test, even they have, even though they have the vaccine, we still recommend it. Something that we want to remind the community to practice is still the distance, still protect yourself, the hand sanitizer. So still protect yourself. And thank you, Matthew, for all the hard work.
Thank you, Joaquin, especially as we move into more indoor activities that are public indoor activities, like restaurants and making sure we stay vigilant. Great. We will now move on to a presentation from Veronica on our sustainability updates for Earth Day.
Great, thank you so much. Good evening, Mayor, Speaker Council. I'm Veronica Bostonak, Sustainability Analyst, and I'm here. We have a couple of Earth Day events that I believe we announced the last time. And I have a couple newer updates in honor of Earth Day. Of course, Earth Day is this Thursday, April 22nd. And we've been celebrating Earth Day all month and it's an exciting time in the world of sustainability. Next slide. So this Saturday on the 24th, we will have a Earth Day recycling event from 9:00 AM to 12:00 PM at Smithfield. Thanks to Republic Services, we're able to offer free e-waste recycling, documents shredding and compost for all Half Moon Bay residents. Of course, please wear your masks and social distancing is required for this event as it will be in person. And if you have any questions, please feel free to contact us or go to the website, hmbcity.com/communityrecyclingday for any specific information about any of these three services. Please be sure to bring your ID or your Republic Services bill so that we can verify your residence at, at the event to access the services. Next slide. And next week on the 29th, at 6:00 PM on Zoom, we will be holding a What Goes Where Waste Sorting Workshop. We will go over a little bit about your curbside collection service and some easy ways to determine what goes and what been. But of course, waste sorting is not always super straightforward. So please come with your questions, your most difficult questions. We will have city staff, Republic staff and other industry experts online to answer any questions you have. We will also have live Spanish translation available. So please, if that, if you're listening tonight in Spanish, this, a similar service will be available for you at this event as well. Thanks to Republic Services, there will be four $50 gift cards that we'll be raffling off at this event to support local businesses. So if you do attend this event, please make sure you stay till the end at a chance to win one of those gift cards. There is a little bit more information and the Zoom link will be available at our website on the screen, Next slide. And for Earth Day, each year we also do a essay contest. This year, we have two $1,000 scholarships available for juniors or seniors in high school that are either enrolled in a Half Moon Bay High School or reside within the city. These scholarships are sponsored by Republic Services and Peninsula Clean Energy. So if you are a high school student or you know a high school student who is interested in sustainability or reduction of greenhouse gas emissions, I encourage you to take a look at the website and the prompt and submit an application. Applications are due on, at midnight or 11:59 PM on Friday, May 28th. More information and an application packet is available on our website at the bottom, Next slide. So now moving on to my newer updates, I wanted to share with you all some progress on our climate Lotteria game that we've been developing to do some outreach with the cap once a draft is available this summer. I have a example of what some of the cards will look like. We tried to kind of give this a similar look and feel to the classic Lotteria game, but have this focused completely on climate to help with education and outreach overall. So I have some specific examples of three cards on the next three slides that we can go through so you can get an idea of what they look like. We can just go through these three. Perfect. So we're really excited about launching this game. We'll be doing some work with Allahs to make sure, of course, this game will be bilingual. We'll have a set in both English and in Spanish. I'm just showing the English version here tonight. But we'll be working with them and holding some focus groups in, in May to help make this game as effective and hopefully as fun as possible. Next slide. So this is my last update for you all tonight. I'm excited to announce that on Earth Day, Thursday, April 22nd, we will be publishing a draft of our building electrification ordinance. This draft will reflect the direction that staff received at the study session on February 2nd to require all-electric for new construction and to develop a plan to transition existing buildings to all-electric as well by a certain date. The draft will be published on our website and a link will be going out on E-News and the Sustainability Newsletter, Sustainability Source on Earth Day. We will be launching a robust outreach effort to accompany this draft in June through September in preparation for a first reading in the fall of this year. Last week, we created a listserv. So any members of the public or the council that are interested in receiving the most up-to-date information and updates on this ordinance can sign up for the listserv available on the website linked here. And that website will be updated with the most up-to-date information as well. Any comments or questions on this ordinance should be sent to sustainability@hmbcity.com. And I've also included a phone number here on this slide if anyone chooses to provide their comments by phone instead of all by email. So that's all my updates. Happy Earth, happy early Earth Day to all of you. And I'm here if there's any questions.
Thank you, Veronica. I'll try her. Any questions, comments?
Thank you. There's been an incredible amount of misinformation about the building electrification. So I think that outreach is really important. And I think having a few months to have the community be able to participate and learn about the advantages of building electrification is really important. So thank you for doing this.
Yes, and I did actually forget to mention, there is an FAQ document on the website right now that goes over a little bit of some of the misunderstandings or some of the information that we've heard or questions we've heard so far. And I'll have a slightly updated one to accompany the ordinance on Thursday as well. So there's an FAQ that will be continuously updated as we go through the outreach. So thank you for reminding me to, to provide that information as well.
Thank you.
Thanks, our Councilmember Pedros.
Yes, I just had a question, Veronica. Can you explain a little bit about the Smithfield event? Two questions. One is how much material can people bring for recycling? And two, what do you mean by self-serve e-waste recycling?
Sure.
That, thank you.
Yeah, no problem. So for the document shredding, we limit the shredding to three banker's boxes per, per household. So those are kind of the standard boxes that people store paperwork in. And for the e-waste recycling, there is no, no limit. Of course, if you're planning on bringing a lot of material, I would encourage you to reach out to us ahead of time just to make sure that we have enough space. But generally, there's not a limit. The self-serve aspect of the e-waste recycling refers to something different. This, this particular event due to COVID regulations, our e-waste vendor does not feel comfortable having a representative there. Normally, they would go to your car and grab your item and place it into the bin. For this event, people who need to do e-waste recycling will need to feel comfortable taking it out of their car and lifting it into a bin. So keep that in mind. It's a little bit different. Hopefully, when we have events, once some COVID restrictions have lifted, we can go back to some more service. But make sure you bring some strong people to help you bring any big items that you bring to the, to the event on Saturday.
Thank you.
Of course, thank you for bringing that up.
Any other questions? Okay.
Sorry. Last up, I was just gonna transition. We do have a short, I think, video presentation from our police department. Welcome, Captain Lopez.
Thank you, Bob. So before I, we show the video, I just want to say good evening to the mayor and honorable counsel in the community. Two of our deputies that are assigned to the city of Half Moon Bay are actual drone operators. The sheriff's office, within the last six months, created an unmanned aerial vehicle unit, which has been already been utilized here on the coast for search and rescue missions. And based on the two tragic drownings that we had over the past several months, one of the deputies that you'll see in the video, who deploys the first life jacket, actually did research because he was so impacted by the incident of the young man at Cal Ranch State Beach, that he located a device on how to deploy a life jacket in the water. So this program, what we did is partnered up with the San Mateo County Harbor District and also State Parks. And we have created a series of PSAs in regards to the influx of visitors to the coast. And as we've talked many times, as part of our beach response plan, our enforcement plan for the illegal, illegal activities on the beach, we're going to be utilizing these drones quite a bit, both at day, during the day and at night. But the purpose of this video is to show how impactful it's going to be for those people that are actually dragged out to sea now that we have a mechanism to hopefully save them and bring them back to shore. So Colleen, you can go ahead and play the video. Unfortunately, we don't have sound to it, but you'll understand the concept. They can launch from any point on our coastline. So here we have a couple of rescue swimmers from the Harbor District. And basically, the deputies are deploying the drone out of their vehicle, which they carry with them during their shift. out of their vehicle, which they carry with them during their shift. And once they are ready for deployment, they attach the life jacket and they drop it within a few feet of the stranded swimmer or the person out at sea. So as you can see, they're able to identify the person. They're also able to speak one-way communication to that person they're trying to rescue and give them directions through a amplified speaker on the drone. And you can see our sheriff's office marine unit also in assistance with the Harbor District as well. So again, I just want to thank those partners on the coast side. We've worked with them during COVID. As the council knows, and this is just another compliment that the sheriff's office brings to the city of Half Moon Bay, based on the two deputies being assigned here to the city limits. So thank you very much.
Woo-hoo.
Nice tool.
Yeah.
Thanks, Al.
Yeah, not a problem. And I'm really looking forward to in the next couple of meetings, I'll be able to highlight the Polaris. It's actually the finishing touches. I just got an email this week. So we're really excited about deploying that and issuing a press release for the Polaris and you'll see that out on the beach, conducting patrols and really hopefully, you know, deterring a lot of that activity that we saw last year and in years prior. So this is just one other tool that we're going to be able to use. So thank you.
Know what you're talking about, and we do indeed welcome the Polaris for those evening activities, especially that. It's sounding great. Thank you.
Absolutely. And you can, you can find these links on our social media platforms as well.
Okay.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you for joining us. Any questions? Or so on that. Okay. Thanks again. So I really appreciate that. Okay, that concludes our three update reports. Move on to consent calendar. We have five items. Did anyone want to pull any item before we make a motion? I don't see anybody. Would anyone like to make a motion for adoption of the consent calendar? All right, we're moving from jeopardy into final jeopardy. Anybody? Okay, well, I would like to make a motion to adopt the consent calendar. Items one A waiver reading of resolutions and ordinances. Item one B warrants for the, accepting the warrants list for the month of March 2021. Item one C to adopt resolution establishing job classification salary schedules for a maintenance assistant position. Item one D that we receive and file position letters for Assembly Bill 1500, Senate Bill nine, Senate Bill 45, and Senate Bill 612. And item one E authorizing, motion authorizing the city manager to sign a license agreement with the Regents of the University of California for the bio-sail education and stewardship program pilot project.
I'll second.
Thank you. Can we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Penrose?
Yes.
Councilmember Rarback?
Yes.
Councilmember Jimenez?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Reddick?
Yes.
Mayor Brownstone?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously?
Thank you. We have no ordinances and public hearings, so move on to resolutions. And we have one resolution regarding public art deaccessioning. Accessing or accessioning. Sessioning I'll go with. Public art deaccessioning policy, and I believe we will have a staff report on that first. Or do I open up? I'm sorry. Yeah, staff report first.
Good evening, Mr.
Thank you, Mayor Browns.
Right, Matthew?
Go for Victor, you're on it.
Okay. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. My name is Victor Haddan with the city manager's office. Happy to be here tonight to talk to you about the public art deaccessioning policy. And I know that's every time I bring it up, it's a new word for everyone. So it's deaccessioning. So I'll share my screen and share the presentation. Okay, can everyone see that? Great. So starting with a bit of background, as many of you may know, the city owns several pieces of public art. These pieces of public art have been collected throughout the years and are placed on on various public city-owned sites. And now due to the construction of the Highway One South Safety and Operational Improvement Project, which you've probably all seen, due to the construction there, it's the new gateway signs being erected. The Half Moon Gateway sculpture that's located just north of that site has to be either removed or relocated. So that's part of the reason why this this has come up at this point. And deaccessioning policy is a pretty common policy that that many cities or other jurisdictions have in their public art policies. Because it sets a very clear set of guidelines and procedures to take whenever the removal or moving a piece of public art comes up. And the city staff have researched deaccessioning policies from other jurisdictions, drafted this policy that's being presented today. This draft policy was presented to the Parks and Recreation Commission on two occasions, once in January and once in March. And feedback has been solicited from Parks and Recreation Commission as well as various history and art related nonprofits in town. And with that, I will move right into, oh, I guess I'll show a couple of pictures first. Just to refresh everyone's memories, this is the Half Moon sculpture at the south end of Main Street. That will have to be moved to the construction there. And here are a couple of the other sculptures. Not covering all of them, but just giving an example of sculptures in some of the state that they're currently in. There's a Kitty Fernandez Park. And of course, a Carter Park. So I've covered this a bit. I'll go over it again. So first, again, back to the word deaccessioning, which is the procedure for the removal of artwork owned by the city and the termination of its future disposition. And cover this a bit, but I'll go over it again. Why is the policy necessary? It's really important to have a very clear set of rules, regulations and guidelines. And going about this, removing a piece of artwork can be a very sensitive subject to the community, to the artist, to the city. So it really is best to have clear guidelines, procedures whenever this this occasion comes up. And here I'll be highlighting the main points that are made throughout the policy. I won't be going over the whole policy because it's it's quite long. But that is attached to the staff report. But I'll start with the main points here. And so typically, any proposal for deaccession can be initiated by the city, Parks and Recreation Commission, which will be the first commission from the city to hear any, any proposals for deaccession before making a recommendation to the city council. Or the artist or their designated heirs can also start a proposal for deaccessioning of a piece of artwork. And as part of the policy, regular intervals, at least once annually, the city's artwork collection shall be evaluated to determine the condition of each piece of artwork and to determine at that point whether deaccessioning might be recommended. And as I mentioned, the Parks and Recreation Commission, which abbreviated here as PRC, shall review and make recommendations. And that recommendation will then go to the city council, who will make the final determination on the deaccession request. And the policy includes several guidelines and criteria for when a piece of artwork may be considered for review towards deaccessioning. And here I have a couple of those guidelines or criteria. This is not a complete list, but just a couple of them. So if an art, a piece of artwork, if its structural condition poses a threat to public safety, if you're part of excessive maintenance, if it's been damaged and repair remedies are impractical or unfeasible, if the site where the artwork is located is undergoing privatization, redevelopment or improvement for a public purpose, such as the case with the Highway One South project, or if a written request from the artists have been received to remove the work from public display. Moving forward to the procedures, again, this is not a full list, but a general overview of what the procedures would look like. The whole process starts with a formal deaccessioning request that request is submitted to the city. Initially read by city staff who will make all, all, all appropriate outreach to art groups, history groups, cultural religious groups, as well as the artists or the designated heirs. And then that is then presented to the Parks and Recreation Commission at a public meeting. The Parks and Recreation makes a recommendation, whatever that conditions, either accept or reject the deaccession request. And then that recommendation is again presented to the city council for final termination. And finally, part of the recommendation from the Parks and Recreation Commission and the final termination from the city council will include a determination on the disposition of the piece of public art. And there are four options that are being recommended. One is an exchange, either with an artist, a gallery, museum or institution, a transfer, relocation of a piece of public art to another location that may be more suitable. Or if a piece of artwork has just deteriorated or been damaged and the cost repair is disproportionate to the value of the repair, destruction and eventually disposal could be recommended as well. And the one caveat I'll make here is that even though we'll have this whole policy in an emergency situation, where a piece of art, say a statue might have been damaged in an accident or in a weather event, and it poses an immediate threat to public health and safety, the city might have, may have to take emergency action, in which case might not be able to go through this whole procedure because it is an emergency situation. And actually, the one thing I'll mention before the recommendation is while this policy is being presented today, we're in the, in the coming months, we'll also be presenting a general public art policy, if somebody is wondering that. And potentially a policy regarding art impact fees. So those are two that that might be looked into the whole public art policy, including this policy. So with that, I'll move on to the recommendation, which is to adopt a resolution adopting the public art deaccessioning policy, which establishes clear guidelines regarding the removal or relocation of city-owned public art. And without all the rest of questions.
Any questions from council and then we'll open up for public forum? Councilmember.
I don't have a question. I do want to say that I'm glad this is coming forward. But I'm especially glad to hear that we're developing a policy relating to art. Art projects that are being initiated, about how we select which art to display, et cetera. Seems to me we want to get it right, you know, right out of the gate. So having a public art policy is is really important in combination with this deaccessioning. So I understand the sensitivity of it. I'm glad it's coming forward and I'm glad we're, but we're taking the bigger view as well. Just want to say thanks.
Thank you. Any other comments before I move it out for public forum? Okay. Any comments from the public? I'm opening the public forum now. If there's any comments, please raise your hand. As an attendee.
You don't have any hands raised here.
Thank you. Public forum is closed. Any further discussion on this council, councilor writing, is your hands, something else or is your hand just up? Your own.
I have nothing else, sorry.
Okay, no, no problem. Any other discussion on this? Before I ask for a motion? Okay, would someone like to make a motion? We could put it back up on from the slide deck.
Sorry, one second.
Thanks, Victor.
I move that we adopt a resolution adopting the public art deaccessioning policy, which establishes clear guidelines regarding the removal or relocation of city-owned public art.
Second.
Can we have a vote, please? Roll call.
Councilmember Penrose?
Yes.
Councilmember Jimenez?
Yes.
Councilmember Rarback?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Reddick?
Yes.
Mayor Brownstone?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously?
Thank you, everyone. Okay, do you have any commission or committee updates from anybody on council?
Mr. Mayor, we, we have no commission or committee updates from staff.
Yep, I was going to say our staff. Thank you. Appreciate that. That's what I meant to say. Thank you, Bob. Any city council reports? Okay. Tonight, for our adjournment, we are going to adjourn, but in memory of Gene Mullin, and I would like to turn this over to Councilmember Reddick to provide some background to the honor.
Yes, I won't be verbose, but former Assembly Member Gene Mullin died recently. He had a coside connections. He was, I believe, the nephew of Dolores Mullin, who was the longtime godmother of Catherine Bay. But the thing that's really unique about Gene Mullin, I think, and deserves comment is, you know, each of us sort of exist within a series of concentric circles, right? It's your, it's your family and the neighborhood and the community, nonprofit organizations, state government, on and on. And Gene Mullin, with his love of civic duty, touched, you know, all of those. He was an outstanding and award-winning educator. He was a planning commissioner, a mayor, an assembly member. He, he wrote books, non, you know, nonfiction books about about government. He had a large circle of friends. He had a wonderful family. His son, Kevin, is the Assembly Speaker pro temp right now in Sacramento. So he's, he's just, he was excellent, I think, role model for all of us in an era where we could use more civics education and more commitment and respect for, for government and all of our institutions. You know, he, he did it all and exemplified, you know, love of community and love of country. So he will be missed and I would just call for, you know, a moment of silence as we adjourn the meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Debbie, for those words of remembrance and kind words for Gene Mullin, for his service and for his dedication to the public interest, which, as you say, all emulate and model. So thank you again. Thank you staff. Thank you, members of the council. Thank you, members of the public who joined us tonight. We now adjourn our meeting and I wish you all peace. Thank you. Good night.
Night.
Night.